I'd like to call this Celine City Council meeting to order if you please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know, I'm going to talk about it later.
Okay, members present this evening are myself, Mayor Marl, council members Burgoyne, Girbaugh, Rhodes, Roth, and Mayor Protem Tahar. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, clerk Royal, city engineer superintendent Ruble, city treasurer Bennett, police chief Rennick, business ambassador Kathy Korfman, and our DPW director, Mr. Fordyce, or at least he was here. And for the rest of you present this evening, if you'd please sign in in the back, we would appreciate that. At this time, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as amended. You should have a couple of things in front of you, actually maybe just one, excuse me. A resolution relating to new business item 14-172. This is a revised resolution that Mayor Protem Tahar worked on. That will be the resolution that we consider and review when we get to that portion of the agenda. It's very similar to the one that was provided in your packet with just a few additions, I believe. Is that correct, Mayor Protem?
That's correct, yeah, highlighted in yellow.
So again, we'll discuss that when we get to new business item 14-172. And then, under discussion, I would like to add an issue that was brought up last week at our work meeting, a cost of living adjustment for pensioners. I want to just make sure there's not misinformation being spread, so I want to briefly discuss that. And again, that would be at the end of the discussion portion of our agenda. Are there any other additions to the agenda this evening? If not, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Protem Tahar, seconded by council member Girbaugh. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. And at this time, I would seek a motion to excuse the absence of councilwoman Sibyl Keenig.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne, and seconded by council member Girbaugh. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and Ms. Sibyl Keenig is excused. We move on now to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess, former council member for 22 years. When we were, it's regarding the public hearing coming up, and the tax abatement transfer. When we first got into tax abatements, it was to bring jobs. And everything seems to have changed because now the machinery takes the jobs. And the one before us, apparently for you to transfer a tax abatement that might go on until 2021. It appears the real property is 7.8 million in the request, and the personal property is 15.1 million, which of course, with the proposal being passed, however, that personal property is eventually going to go off the rolls and God's good or the governor's going to give us money, that's right. I was wondering, as far as personal property, does, because I remember we had, you have machines, and those get the credit. Are the people going to just leave the building and the other people are going to take over the same machines? What, I know the curtains that they had tax abatements on and furniture and that stuff, that probably is a long time gone. I'm sorry that the Ford contracts apparently fell through. And I remember as council, you felt bad, and I felt bad as a taxpayer when the Ford Motor Company moved. Now, with this tax break, of course, the council is contemplating how we're going to raise some taxes, be it millage or bonding. And so that's going to be more taxes on me and all the rest of the taxpayers. And yet tonight, we're talking about transferring the tax cut on another company. And I feel that it should be, when they're talking, they had 110 employees in the present company. The one that would like to take over is going to take on 25 of them. And they hope to add 65 next year. Maybe ought to give a year tax abatement and then see how many employees they have next year. It used to be you had employees, but now you have machines and there aren't employees. And I've heard that half of something is better than half of nothing. But the taxpayers have been pretty well, we had to pay for the industrial land. The taxpayers paid for the water and sewer in preparing the industrial park. The money went to Tifa, Leefah, and EDC or whatever. But now, excuse me, I'll talk at the public hearing.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there additional citizen comments on agenda items? No, then we move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve as submitted.
Thank you, council member Rhodes, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by council member Roth. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to public hearings. This is Windsor Mold USA Incorporated IFT request for transfer. Public hearing, item 14-170. So it'll be a series of three motions. The first is to open the public hearing.
So moved.
And that will be at, it looks like 7:45, Mr. Girbaugh, if you're comfortable with that?
Yep.
Thank you.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Girbaugh, seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. This public comment period is now open. Anyone who would wish, who would like to speak, excuse me, to this issue either from the company or from the public is invited forward at this time.
Good evening. My name's Rick Lara, I'm an attorney with Kerr Russell. I'm the attorney for Windsor Mold, and our firm's had the pleasure of working with the Windsor Mold Group for many years now. For the past several months, we've been assisting Windsor Mold on a deal with Sheeran Trier to acquire its facility at 1294 Beach Court. Deal's expected to close at the end of this month, and one of the last remaining conditions needed prior to closing is your consideration this evening of the approval of the transfer of the existing tax exemption certificates. And I certainly appreciate all the courtesy that was given to my office and to the Windsor Mold folks, and all the professionalism that's been exhibited by everyone involved. So thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce David Smith, who's the director of sales for Windsor Mold. Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the Windsor Mold Group. We started as a tool-making company in 1972, and we've continued to grow organically throughout North America for the past 40 some-plus years. Currently, we have eight plants across North America and approximately 1,400 employees. The Celine facility, the purchase of this facility would make our ninth plant. We have two injection mold shops, one in Windsor and one in Far Texas. And currently, we have six parts manufacturing plants, two in the Windsor area, two in Ohio, one in Tennessee, and one in Mexico. We're a medium-to-large tonnage injection molding company from the part side, supplying the underhood and exterior of the vehicle to our customers. We've spent about three years really searching for a plant in Michigan to expand our footprint and support our customers in the Michigan area. Currently, our three main customers are Ford, GM, and Toyota. We're very excited about BMW becoming a customer with this acquisition in Celine. The initial look was at having 25 employees in the Celine facility. Currently, we've had 44 employees except, that we're going to bring on and start with 44 employees, and we look forward to getting to that number of 90 in the next two years.
Thank you very much. There's some questions for the applicant, Mr. Burgoyne?
Yes, in terms of the building and land and so forth, those aren't going anywhere. But the machinery, there's a question on whether you're going to use the same amount of machinery as was there in the past, whether you bought the machinery as part of the package, whether you're doing something different. What is the value, let's say, let's use dollar value? I myself am more interested in having the plant function and rather than the number of employees. So I would like to have an idea, will you have the same amount of machinery and equipment and so forth? Will you have a lot less? Will you have more?
Our plan is to, it's an asset purchase. We are purchasing the land, the building, and the equipment. Some of the equipment that was there six months ago has left. A couple extrusion lines, which isn't what we do. We worked with Mercedes, and they moved that to a facility, a different facility. We're not an extruder, and we didn't feel we could support that customer in the right way. Our plan, there currently is 10 machines in the building. Our long-term plan, we see that we can get about 13 machines in that building.
In terms of the tax abatement amount, there was an initial tax abatement amount that was given to Sheeran Trier in dollars. Are you going to fulfill that same level of tax abatement amount or a similar level?
There was certainly the goal is to have a similar, there's a little bit that's on the existing abatements that we've crossed off, and about 10%, I think overall is what's leaving.
Okay.
The remainder will stay, and then the hope is with that vacated space is to add in the three additional machines, and those would be, you know, a substantial investment into Michigan.
So it will come back to the similar level as the value that was there prior?
That's correct.
That was my question.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Any additional questions for the applicant? Mr. Roth, do you have a question?
I don't know whether this is the applicant or not, but it's the paperwork that we have as far as the tax abatement amounts. One of, as far as the letter dated July 15, 2014, it gives an amount for a tax exemption certificate IFT for $2,000, or $2,110,583 in a real property for $3,621,434. But then on the supporting document that you have, or the applications for investor facilities, the next page in the appendix, it's crossed through, and these numbers don't match. One says $3,4045 for the real property, and the other one for personal property, $5,114,628. There's a discrepancy there. Lines have been crossed off. I'm for probably granting a tax abatement, but I'd like to have what it is now, not what it was. And I was wondering if the new machinery is included in the new figure, or you're going to be coming back for a traditional tax abatement?
Well, this is the existing abatement, and we did have to come in and amend the cover sheet because the document itself isn't created really for transfers. It's not, there wasn't a line item for us to put in, the change dollars. We came in and just actually crossed it off on the application to reflect the proper amounts that's in the supporting document with the cross-off. The cross, all the items that are crossed off shows what's actually being in the facility.
Right, the problem that I've got is the cover letter from our city clerk. The figures that she gives us versus the figures on the application do not match. And I'm wondering exactly where we are with this.
Let me, Mr. Roth, it's an important question, a valid question, I think better than the applicant though. I think Ms. Korfman could probably provide some insight on that inquiry, if you mind.
They initially applied for these transfers on July 15th, but there was, we needed to know exactly what property was going, so we had them cross off what wasn't going, and then amend the applications, which was done July 31st. So Terry, or city clerk Royal's initial memo there was before we had made the changes to reflect what is actually being purchased for the equipment.
So this cross-off, where it says "received" July 15th on top, it's not, it's initial but not dated down at the bottom, so we have no way of indicating what this is all about?
Well, the city clerk, on my copy, it's really faint. If you look at this page, it says revised July 31st. My copy's really faint, so...
But I would recommend in the future, if they cross off something like that, initially you also date it, so we don't have misunderstandings.
Sure, not a problem.
That's a good suggestion, Mr. Roth, we can implement that. Thank you for your question. Mr. Girbaugh, did you have a question or a comment, sir?
No, I was just going to say, this was just an internal memo between you and the city manager and Catherine Skoll, so the final figures which are presented to us are the ones that are represented on the adjusted form.
Right, because when she receives an application, she has to...
Yeah, so it was an internal thing, it wasn't anything formal to us, thank you.
Burgoyne?
In the, in the next motion after the hearing, where it says to adopt a resolution, we should adopt a resolution that says what certificate number is being transferred and what the amounts are. So I want to make sure that we are being very clear to the State Tax Commission what we are doing. It has to be a certain certificate or more than one certificate, and it has to be for amounts. So we have, we should get it right, we should do it right here.
Chair will be happy to entertain the motion that's articulated on the agenda this evening or any amended motion, Mr. Burgoyne. So when we get to that portion of the agenda, if you'd like to offer an amended motion, the chair would be happy to entertain that.
Or perhaps the attorney could tell us exactly which certificates and what amounts they want. I'd be willing to do whatever he's asking, but I want to be clear what we're doing.
So certificate number 2004-366. The amended amount for personal property costs is $4,054,502. And that gives us a total project cost of $7,897,816. So I'm just reading off right now the amended numbers from the original.
Okay, so that's what you want?
That's correct.
A 2004-366, and those two numbers that add up to $7,877,816.
Well, no, I... Eight ninety-seven.
Eight ninety-seven, oh, okay.
We have, I'm sorry, just to summarize, so on that one, we have a land and building improvements of $3,843,314.
Yes.
Machinery and equipment, the amended amount is now $4,054,502. The total project cost for that particular certificate is $7,897,816.
And you have other certificates you want?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, excuse me, Mayor Protem?
So the fact that the certificate numbers are specified in the resolution is not enough?
I believe it is, but again, in my position as chair, I will entertain any motion that is moved and seconded by a member of council. I believe it's worded appropriately, but it certainly wouldn't be incorrect or improper for Mr. Burgoyne to make a more specific motion.
Okay, so...
I'm happy if that item number three in the resolution is correct as to the certificate numbers, and if we adopt them as amended, because at least one of them is amended.
Correct, I agree with you.
So I would be happy with that if that satisfies the attorney.
That's satisfactory to us, certainly.
Okay, okay. Are there additional questions for the applicant? No? Gentlemen, thank you very much, appreciate your time. Kathy, thank you. Are there any additional public comments?
Move to close?
It's been moved by Mr. Girbaugh to close the public hearing at 7:55 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tahar. All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Public hearing is now closed. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt the resolution approving the transfer of an industrial facilities exemption certificate and a tax exemption agreement for Windsor Mold, Windsor Mold, excuse me, USA Incorporated.
I move to adopt the resolution with the, with the amounts as updated in the certificates. So that, to move the resolution would include the item numbers in item three of the resolution, but I want to make sure we get the updated number.
So with amounts updated as specified in the resolution?
It's not in the resolution.
Excuse me?
As attached.
As attached, okay. With amounts updated as attached. So let me just read this back to you, Mr. Burgoyne, to make sure we're on the same page. A motion to adopt the resolution approving the transfer of an industrial facilities exemption certificate and tax exemption agreement for Windsor Mold USA Incorporated with amounts updated as attached.
Correct.
Can I just suggest, per the memo dated July 31st, 2014, I think those numbers are all correct on there, right?
Okay, I'm okay with that.
So add that at the end, Mr. Girbaugh, is that your suggestion?
Correct, be specific.
Memo dated July 31st. And you're comfortable with that addition to the end, Mr. Burgoyne?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a second to Mr. Burgoyne's amended motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Girbaugh. Discussion? Mr. Girbaugh?
Since we already had basically committed to Sheeran Trier when we did this initially, because I was believed basically in the EDF and LDFD, all of the economic boards, sorry, and had been on special projects when we considered this, as long as this is moving forward with the potential to continue the investment in our community and continuing to have jobs here, but also to commit to the basic asset value that we've got on our books, this will be a good move for us, and so I think we should continue it.
Very good. Additional comments? Mr. Roth?
This is probably nitpicky, but I think it's plural. It's not one exemption, it's exemptions, because there's several certificates that we're doing.
Certificates, yes, should be plural certificates.
Certificates, okay. You're comfortable with that small addition, Mr. Girbaugh?
Yeah, that's fine.
It's fine either way, but that's perfectly acceptable, okay? Additional discussion? Well, let me just say, and gentlemen, I appreciate you all being here this evening, and as you all know, and as most of my colleagues on council know, I had the opportunity along with city manager Campbell and business ambassador Korfman to meet with your president, CEO Keith, and your senior vice president, Colin, about a month ago to talk about your plans for Celine. And quite frankly, and this is not hyperbole, I left that meeting elated because I was aware for some time of the struggles and challenges that had faced Sheeran Trier in recent years, and was glad to see that there was a company interested in acquiring the equipment and the property. And I have to say to my colleagues and for those of you in the audience or who will be viewing this meeting later on television or in print, you can do the research on Windsor Molding yourself, but this is a very solid, very conservative, low-key company who, as the presenter indicated, has a presence globally. And I'm very excited that you chose Celine to be the home of your first Michigan location. And I enthusiastically endorse this motion. And I know that we at the city of Celine look forward to working with you for many years to come and hope that you prosper and thrive in this community for many years to come. So thank you very much, gentlemen. If there's nothing further, we have a motion on the floor moved by Burgoyne, seconded by Girbaugh. Note that it is amended language to adopt the resolution. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, appreciate your time. We move on now to old business, item 14-161. Please bear with me here, this is a protracted motion. It's a community event application for Oktoberfest. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 28th, 2014 letter and application for community event slash use of public ways from Bob Rosenberg and Rebecca Schneider for the annual Oktoberfest event. To acknowledge receipt of the July 31st, 2014 memo from police chief Rennick, the August 1st, 2014 memo from fire chief Heft, and the August 1st, 2014 memo from public works director Fordyce. And to approve or not to approve the Oktoberfest event to be held downtown Celine on September 26th and 27th, 2014, including authorization for the beer and wine tent utilizing North and South Ann Arbor streets and parking lot number four. Farmer's market relocated to parking lot number two, subject to the following conditions. Number one, that the traffic engineer issue the required temporary traffic control orders for street closings. Number two, that a permit be obtained from MDOT for the closing of the left turn lane on Michigan Avenue. Three, that a certificate of liability insurance be provided by Celine Main Street with the city of Celine as an endorsed additional insured party for the event. Four, that a certificate of liquor liability insurance be provided by the applicant for the beer and wine tent with the city of Celine as an additional insured party. Number five, that all temporary signs are subject to approval by the building department before being placed. Number six, that all fees over and above the normal operating cost for the porta johns and hand washing stations and/or police services in the estimated amount of $1,169.76 and DPW services in the estimated amount of $3,135 be waived.
Move to approve and to waive.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tahar. Mr. Rosenberg or Mrs. Schneider or Ms. Zubko, would you care to come up and make a comment about one of our signature events downtown?
Thank you. Well, let me begin by saying, I'm sorry, this is old business. I understand that it was addressed last week, and I wasn't here. There were some communication, miscommunications, and I apologize for that. I can kind of address this and talk about some of the issues that I think were discussed last week, and then open the floor to questions, if that's okay?
That'd be great.
Okay, so first of all, the Downtown Merchants Association originally added Friday night as an opportunity for Celine Main Street to raise some funds, because we are a 501(c)(3), and certainly we need funds in order to prosper and move things forward and keep the events that we do moving forward. Last year, we had a very successful event, and we brought in a band called 50 Amp Fuse. Really popular. We brought in people from at least 60 miles away, which is great because they begin to discover what downtown Celine's all about. And that certainly is one of our goals as a nonprofit organization, as a Main Street organization. We heard overwhelmingly last year that people wanted 50 Amp Fuse to come back again. And that's great, we're excited about that. Their cost went up. And so we determined that in order to help us defray some of those costs, that we would charge a small $5 admission for people 21 and over. That will help us in two ways, it'll help us check ID, certainly help us defray costs. And checking IDs are really important things, so we will check IDs, get the $5 and issue a wristband, so that helps us make sure that we are serving only people who are 21 and older. We have done a little research, and there are festivals around the state where they do charge a small fee and entrance fees in order to make the community events happen. The expenses for this event are over $22,000, and only $1,000 of that comes from our contract services, plus of course, the contract for services that allows the city to offer us in kind in way of DPW, et cetera. So Saturday is free, Saturday evening, with a band that people enjoyed at Summerfest. Yeah, just came to me, Phoenix Theory. It was there, it was coming, I knew. Phoenix Theory, Phoenix Theory will be there on Saturday, and that's free as well. And of course, for people for whom $5 is, you know, something they don't want to spend, we always need volunteers. They can come in on Friday and volunteer. Volunteers do not have to pay the fee, they just need to prove they're 21.
Very good. Thank you, Bob. Are there questions for the applicant? No questions? Okay, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Tahar?
Somewhat self-interested question. So presumably, volunteers who are volunteering for some of your participating organizations will also be able to get in free on Friday? Is that...
I'd like to call a friend. I was pretty sure, but...
Your bratwurst vendors, you're allowed to come in without forcing us to pay $5 to come in serve bratwurst?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, vendors aren't charged.
All right, just checking.
Any additional questions or comments? No? Bob, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any additional discussion? Mr. Girbaugh?
I'm kind of hard-pressed at having a $5 admission charge on this just because we haven't done it before, and we're starting to get more into an issue where I think the term was to have people come uptown and basically participate. I know Main Street is functioning on its own funds and such, but considering the amount of money that we're putting into it for tax dollars in terms of the $5,000 approximately, or, well, $4,500 approximately that we're supporting this event, I am a bit worried that we're going on a slope that we had a concern with, with the Celtic Festival when we started acquiring and putting in admission fees for it. I'd much rather see you place donation cans around and do that process and see how that works first before going into a full-blown admission fee.
Additional comments? I would just add, I share some of Mr. Girbaugh's concerns. One of my goals with all of our events, with the exception of one, but certainly those that exist in our downtown, is that they be free, welcoming, and inclusive. However, in acknowledging that, I should also note that you all are the experts, and I'm sure this has been properly vetted and evaluated. So I'll give you the benefit of the doubt and certainly vote in favor of the motion that's before us this evening, but I would be interested in having subsequent discussions and having this evaluated in the future. Because again, I think the goal, the standard should be a free and inclusive event that, you know, that people can enjoy without... a free and inclusive event that, you know, that people can enjoy without being subject to a fee, a charge. So, but again, I'll give you the benefit of doubt, and I thank you for your time this evening and for all your work in organizing this event. It's no small fee, so appreciate that very much. Is there additional discussion? Mr. Rhodes?
I would just venture to say that if it's required to have a small fee for a small portion of the overall event in order to make the event happen, that we should support that.
Anything else? Ms. Tahar?
Yeah, I would agree with Mr. Rhodes. It's not, the entire Oktoberfest is not costing a fee, and I think the, you know, the response to the $5 fee this year probably will be a really clear indicator about whether or not it was a good idea.
Anything further? No, that's been properly moved by Burgoyne, seconded by Tahar, to approve and to waive. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for your time this evening. Appreciate you being here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
On the next item, can we break that into two to acknowledge first?
Certainly. So we move on now to new business, item 14-171. This is recommendation on Kunsthof Technic Sheer Treer Clawback. I'll first entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the August 7th, 2014 memo from Business Ambassador Korfman.
Motion to acknowledge receipt.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Girbaugh. Ms. Korfman, do you want to come up and discuss maybe briefly your memo of August the 7th, and then we'll open up for questions?
Windsor Mold is purchasing approximately 90% of Sheer Treer's assets. Staff is recommending that City Council approve the recommendation that we were given from City Attorney Smith to abstain from pursuing a clawback from Sheer Treer for the remaining 10%. The passage of proposal one would have gradually eliminated the personal property that is not being bought, and it reduces the impact of failing to transfer that portion. In addition, Windsor Mold has indicated that they may be purchasing equipment for this site, so we feel that jeopardizing the sale by doing a clawback is not in the city's best interest.
Very good. Are there questions for Ms. Korfman? No? Okay. That's been properly moved by Burgoyne, seconded by Girbaugh to acknowledge receipt... Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Burgoyne? I apologize, Ms. Korfman. I guess Councilmember Burgoyne did have a question.
Yeah, it's probably for Windsor Mold. Would this jeopardize the sale?
Yeah, absolutely. Please. We welcome you.
Again, regard on Windsor Mold, that was a condition, not only of the approval of the transfer, but also the waiver of the clawback. For both conditions, they need to be satisfied at this stage to get the deal.
Okay, so to get you in here, we really should do this.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are there additional questions? No? Okay. That's been properly moved by Burgoyne, seconded by Girbaugh to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. We move on to our subsequent motion, which will be a motion to approve or not to approve City Attorney Scott Smith's recommendation that the City of Celine abstain from pursuing a clawback from Kunsthof Technic Sheer Treer USA Incorporated in regards to industrial facility tax exemption certificates, number 2,004-366, number 2,006-335, number 2,009-010, number 2,009-341, and number 2,012-437.
Motion to approve the attorney's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tahar. Is there any discussion? No discussion. That's been properly moved by Burgoyne, seconded by Tahar, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you again, gentlemen. We move on to our final new business item of the evening. This is item 14-172. This is a resolution to request an evaluation for lane reductions on Michigan Avenue. This will be a motion to adopt or not to adopt the resolution requesting that the Michigan Department of Transportation, MDOT, evaluate the city's request for the feasibility of a road diet and other pedestrian and safety enhancements on Michigan Ave. in conjunction with MDOT's 2016 reconstruction project.
I'll move to acknowledge receipt at this point.
Okay. It's been moved by Girbaugh to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Burgoyne. I do want to note before we open it up for discussion that the resolution we're considering is the resolution that was placed at your seat prior to tonight's meeting. Again, it's very similar to what was provided in your packet. There are a few highlighted additions, and I guess at this time, I would turn it over to Mayor Protem Tahar. I should note that the initial resolution was prepared by our Clerk's Office, and then it was reviewed by both myself and Councilmember Rhodes, and now Ms. Tahar has made some additions which I think are appropriate and actually improved the resolution, so at this time I would turn it over to her.
Okay, yes, thank you. So the highlighted areas are the changes I made in all cases except the third, whereas it's simply adding language to the existing language that was given to us. And then the third one, there's a certain amount of wordsmithing that went on as well to accommodate the other, the additions. And the additions that I'm suggesting, that I made and I'm presenting here have to do with broadening the scope of the resolution. I felt that the resolution, as it was written, was very focused on road diet specifically and only as the suggested course of action, and in my opinion, I would like to have MDOT look at other possibilities as well. It's not to say that the previous resolution would have precluded them from doing that, but I just didn't want to leave them any leeway to say, "Road diet won't work next." I may be overly suspicious, but I would like to ask for a broader consideration, and that's the reason I'm suggesting these changes.
Very good, and I appreciate your work on this. Are there comments, questions? Mr. Girbaugh?
I was just going to say, surprisingly, this weekend in the Parade Magazine that was in Ann Arbor dot com or news talked about walkability and communities and small-town Main Streets and such, and in here, it talked about the viability of downtown, as mentioned in this resolution, about the potential for commercial and residential developments, and that's exactly what they're talking about that's made these towns successful, and this was out of approximately 2,000 applications that were presented into it. So what we're presenting in here is what has helped and definitely proven to be successful in other cities across the entire country, not just in Michigan. And actually, Holland is one of the towns that was actually selected in here.
Beautiful town.
So just as a precept to this, saying that I think this is something that will help us lead us, again, into our Main Street and our additional improvements that we're looking for.
Very good. Mr. Burgoyne?
Yeah, I used my time to read this book, Walkable City, and I wrote up some suggestions. I'm going to pass them down. Jeff Speck, who wrote Walkable City, looks at communities, large communities, large urban communities and suburban communities, ex-urban communities like Celine. And for Celine, what he would recommend from this book is that, he recommends 10 steps of walkability. He advises that certain streets will remain principally automotive, and he describes Michigan Avenue as one of these streets. He advises choosing areas in the community that are conducive to walkability, and he talks in terms of size and design, and his size and design relates best to South Ann Arbor and North Ann Arbor, where the street and the building heights have a one-to-one ratio. And he talks about areas that will never be walkable, and he describes the type of street of Michigan Avenue as being one of those. And he recommends that communities like us invest ourselves in areas that will become walkable and make those walkable, and bridge or connect those anchors or areas of walkability with safety features like the leading pedestrian interval, where at the corner of Michigan and Ann Arbor, when the light turns red, the pedestrians are giving a lead start of two or three seconds before a left turn signal or before traffic can move forward. So I tried to think, and I looked at some of his comments on the numerical side, and he's not as strong on the numerical side. He doesn't own a car, and he doesn't, he may own a car in the future, but right now he's oriented towards walkability in those areas that can be walkable. And in a city like Celine, he says that most of the areas will not be walkable, and you would bankrupt your city if you tried to make every area walkable. He also says that streets that are as wide as Michigan Avenue would take buildings as high as the ones around Times Square in New York. You'd need really, really tall buildings to get a sense of enclosure. Says that people who do retail browsing, that wander and look at retail things and spend time walking, want to do in an area where they feel comfortable. So some of the things he suggests are to fill in missing teeth, like what he said architects call the area between Benito's Pizza and Alan Grossman's office as a missing tooth, and that really should have a Zingerman's Cheese shop or a fudge shop or something in there that will maintain retail interest for people that are strolling. So I don't think that the city would be best served by putting a lot of money on Michigan Avenue if the state is going to redo the street at no cost to the city. I think he does have a good point in the book, that the city's money should be put at locations where you will get walkability. Some of his suggestions are to acquire more parking. We, from, and I've cited the pages in the books where this comes out of, some of the things that would benefit the community would be to benefit, to get more parking behind the Presbyterian Church, behind the Chamber of Commerce, get more parking there. As sun engineering is sold, to get parking and to move in the direction of a plaza effect in the parking lot behind Max and along Henry Street, to get more parking along Henry Street, and also to get more fenestration in that, in that building and more retail-oriented uses in the sun engineering building. Another location that would help Celine would be to acquire behind 135 West Michigan Avenue, those plumbing sheds and the back of the old Steve Dodge property, maybe the back third of that. As you sell the city property on South Ann Arbor and eliminate some parking, create more parking to the backside. I'm trying to think in terms of the design elements that he's talking about and where to put the money most effectively. He also says that if you have a main route in and out of town, don't try to go up against that, especially if the design elements aren't that the street width and the building height are one-to-one. If the street is very, very wide and the building height is low, and he cites uses like Jiffy, Jiffy Lube type of uses, car washes, parking lots, things that are not retail, as not conducive to trying to change that street. And if you look between Key Bank and the diner down by the cemetery, the only uses you have is you've got 212, which is right next to the diner, but in between that is exactly the opposite of what the author said is walkable. There's no walking interest in that area. So I tried to get the conversation going onto the Walkable City direction here. I don't think it points to the fact that Michigan Avenue can be walkable. He also talks in terms of connected areas, like the area of Dan's Tavern and those other uses that are on Michigan Avenue are connected to the corner where Drowsy Parrot was and so forth, and he suggests continuing to shape your city with enclosed areas of walkability, but don't do it where it's primarily auto and where the streets are really wide and where it's the main corridor in and out of town.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Mr. Rhodes?
I appreciate the fact that Mr. Burgoyne took the time to go through the Walkable City book and to point out some specifics in there. I don't necessarily agree with some of his conclusions from it. I do appreciate the fact that he had enough interest in the proposal to study that particular book with respect to the height-to-width ratio, since we in the city have decided that we want to limit our downtown to three stories in height, that adds reinforcement to the idea of having a more narrow Michigan Avenue, if that's possible to have happen. So anyway, that's my comments about that. I don't know what the last paragraph has to do with anything that's above it, but that's Mr. Burgoyne's choice. Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Roth?
I'd like to comment on the resolution itself.
Please.
Number one is, I'm not sure what we're going to accomplish by such, since our city engineer had already submitted a memo to MDOT stating some information that we suggested he look at, and that perhaps road diet would something be considered. Pointing out road diet far as really going to make the city neighborhoods and commercial districts accessible, inviting, and economically sound, I'm not sure we've got lots of credence on that within our resolution. This is all good fluffy words. It's something that's our major goals. It's no different than any other city. And I think the road probably, if we say two lanes, four lanes, or whatever it is, it's really something kind of tough to work this out. It's a beautiful goal, but I'm not sure if the road is the means to accomplish it such. The next one, far as increase the value of existing properties and bring in new commercial and residential developments, I really don't see where it's, that could be work as much for us or against us if it's traffic congestion's getting in and out of this particular town or city that we have. So I'm not sure that's a proven factor either, that we put this down. I do appreciate our Mayor Protem's attempt to make this more practical than the initial version. I look at far as, when you mentioned far as the date of the project being 2016, if I were reading this, say, "Well, guys, we got this on the schedule 2016. If you're not happy with what's going on, I'm going to just postpone it, make you wait longer." So it could be a negative intent with that, so I don't know why that even needs to be listed with such. And far as looking forward to cooperation to make a safer community, of course, MDOT does not want to harm any of our particular safety. I look at far as, it's suggested in that particular book that Mr. Burgoyne referred to, that we could probably make Michigan Ave. safer today, or as soon as possible, even before we do the road, if we do something about the main intersection, have a designated crossing for pedestrians, instead of the way we have now pedestrians move with the traffic, follow the traffic, so that you have to deal with right-hand turns and left- traffic, flow of the traffic, so that you have to deal with right-hand turns and left-hand turns, and sometimes pedestrians aren't seen, and we've had people hit that way or near accidents. So if you want to make it safer, make it that pedestrians has a right to cross and no traffic moves in that particular way. That would be a better way doing such, and it would be active, it wouldn't have to go through a cycle if there's no pedestrians there. They can activate the cycle and use one necessary, so it can skip that particular cycle. And I think the lights can be programmed as such for doing that with minimal, minimal amount of cost, and we can make it far as much safer in road, highway. Having congested traffic bumper to bumper, waiting for the light to change, people going to go, and going far as making turns and that type of stuff, it doesn't increase the safety, in my mind's view, that there are other things we can do. In far as, if we're going to make our sidewalks wider, so we can have additional merchant use for sidewalk cafes and that type of stuff, it's one heck of an expense that we're going to go through, far as the traffic's going to pay for that, anybody traversing through the city. And I think that when we lease these particular areas out to the merchants for a dollar or something like that per year, whatever it is, we're really kind of shooting ourselves in the foot with it, that it's, something needs to be really studied much further far as, are we, we're saying the right words, but I'm not sure if they're really feasible accomplishing that we need to look at. We can complain, talk about safety, I suggested a thing for safety, and I'd like to see is to act on it even before 2016 and make our city safer. And far as the other stuff, real estate, if you're making the values go higher, right now, some of the problems that we have to get renters for the downtown spaces, they complain about the square footage costs that they have. So when the property's more valuable with it, I'm sure there's going to be increase of rental, rent for square footage likewise. So it doesn't work as smooth as laid out here. So I would be going against, against the resolution, and I'm not sure what, it's just another piece of paper that's going to go through the MDOT office.
Let me be very clear then, let me speak to the resolution, and then let me make a brief comment about Mr. Burgoyne's memo. The resolution is simply saying that we would like the professionals and technical experts at MDOT to evaluate the feasibility of a road diet and other pedestrian safety enhancements. We're not advocating that they be done, we're simply asking that the professionals take a serious look at them and provide us some data so that we can respond accordingly. And so from that vantage point, I'm very much in favor of the resolution. If I were not, I wouldn't have placed it on the agenda, and I appreciate the work that Mr. Rhodes put into this, as well as Mayor Protem Tahar, excuse me. I think it is a good resolution. I think it clearly states what our desires are in terms of receiving data so that we can make strategic decisions. As it relates to Mr. Burgoyne's memo, Mr. Burgoyne, I genuinely and sincerely appreciate you putting your thoughts on writing, and clearly you took a long and hard look at that, that book on the importance of walkability, and I appreciate that. Similar to Mr. Rhodes, I don't particularly see the relevance of the final paragraph and the assertion, or the point that's made about impugning people's integrity, we've talked about that before, and I find it inappropriate. And the latter part of that paragraph, quite frankly, I don't know where that comes from. It seems as if it was conjured up in Never Never Land. Being that, as it, it is what it is. But again, back to the topic on the agenda this evening, the resolution, I appreciate your thoughts, Mr. Roth. Mr. Har, did you have some additional comments?
Yeah, I would, I would just say that, you know, I think everyone in this room, not just everyone here up at the bench, but everyone in this room probably has very, very strong feelings about how the traffic in Celine could be better managed. And not one of us is a professional with all of the full array of professional tools to do that kind of evaluation. And so, you know, if, if folks at MDOT choose to blow off the resolution, then that's on them, but I think it would be irresponsible of us not to ask them to bring their full expertise and their full set of tools to bear on this issue, and to keep in mind some of the goals we have. Their goals are to move traffic. Our goals are broader than that, and I think that we need to try to bring those goals to their attention. Thank you.
Mr. Girba?
My hope is that whatever we come up, comes out about it, this from details and data, and actually hopefully projections in terms of traffic and everything, that if this doesn't work, or they aren't able to provide us with something that helps improve the safety, and hopefully a better environment for however we handle our, you know, activities in the city, but a deal with addressing what other roads can be paved or improved upon for which we can either reroute traffic or get a less of a traffic impact on our downtown. There's textile road, there's Del Road, there's things the county can do, there's a whole expansion that needs to happen to the north of us, but we need to look at all of these all together, and I think this is part of the pie. If we just look at one function and not bring all those others in together with the information that this may present, we may not have the basis for arguments for our future improvement of traffic flow and everything through this community. So this is part of the flow, and if we actually are pushing for wanting this type of thing, we may actually get some decent information for once. Because when you say that the state of Michigan isn't concerned about our safety, they're the ones that continue to raise the speed limits on our streets out here, and we have nothing to say about it. And so I am tired of having that being done, to the point where they'd rather have 55 miles an hour through our city instead of having a decent speed limit and having some decent safety precautions. So at this point, I think we're taking an appropriate approach by at least requesting all aspects of traffic flow through our city be assessed and reviewed.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Girba. Are there additional comments about the resolution? No? That it's been properly moved by Girba, seconded by Burgoyne. You moved simply to acknowledge receipt. Is that correct, Mr. Girba?
Correct.
Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt or not to adopt the resolution requesting that the Michigan Department of Transportation, MDOT, evaluate the city's request for a feasibility of the road diet and other pedestrian and safety enhancements on Michigan Ave in conjunction with MDOT's 2016 reconstruction project.
Move to adopt.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Tahar. Is there a second?
Support.
Seconded by Councilmember Rhodes. Any discussion? No? Okay. It's been properly moved by Mayor Protem Tahar, seconded by Rhodes to adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Eyes have it, and the motion carries. We move on now to commission and committee reports, and task force reports, excuse me. We just met last week, so we might not have anything. No? Okay. How about reports or other announcements? Mr. Roth?
Friday, September 5th, the Sister City, in cooperation with American Legion, the Sister City for Lindenburg, Germany Committee, is sponsoring a German dinner which helps finance the visit when people from Lindenburg comes over. It's going to be held, American Legion, the profit's going to be split 50/50 with American Legion. It's, dinner starts probably about 7:00 PM, and it's open to the public. The price per person is $20, and it covers, everything is going to be an open bar through the American Legion. So it's an excellent dinner, it's our third year having such, and you can contact me far as making reservations, and you pay at the door.
Very good. Let me just underscore that, Mr. Roth, and of course Mayor Protem Tahar, very active on our Sister City Committee with Lindenburg, and they and their core group work very hard on this dinner. I've attended it in the past, it's a very, very nice dinner. I had a very enjoyable time, well, minus getting red cabbage on my tan suit last year. But I would, I would strongly encourage you, if your schedule permits, to attend. It's a great way to support this very important relationship, and more importantly, it's just a fun evening. So thank you for sharing that, Mr. Roth. Mr. Burgoyne?
I have four announcements.
Please.
So the first announcement is that my mom has just gone into hospice care, so I will not be here for the first meeting in September. So my second announcement is, since retirees like Gene Hess have brought up the issue of cost of living adjustments for retirees, I'm declaring that I will not participate in any way, because I'm a city retiree that would receive a financial benefit if a cost of living adjustment were provided. However, I will continue to push for the savings that are likely in bonding for the MERS unfunded liability. That is only an efficiency increase that could provide millions of dollars of savings. That would also allow us to change all of our defined, all future employees to defined contribution, and will completely eliminate future retiree costs for the city. This only helps the city that working on the bonding does not affect my retirement pension amount, so I am going to continue to do that. I will stay out of the cost of living area. Okay, that was my second announcement. Third, occasionally, as I meet up with developers, I am continuing to promote that we should expand at the west of the city, and that I at least would support that, and I can see the benefit to the schools and to the city from housing development at the west end of our Michigan Avenue corridor. That's not the only reason that I thought, in reading the walkability book, that Michigan Avenue should remain an efficient, you know, transporter of people, but the author himself didn't want it, so that, I took his point of view there where I could. So that's item number three. Announcement number four, I can personally report some progress with Celine Area Social Services in my role as President of the Celine Area Resource Council. My understanding is that both Aid in Myland and Celine Area Social Services are being helped by United Way, although neither of them successfully made it through the change in the funding process, United Way is helping both of them. Pastor Bill Natsis is leading his agency to a fairly successful campaign, but Celine Area Social Services still needs more donations, so if there are people out there that can help, they need help. My understanding is that landlord Bill Kinley has dropped the annual rent down to about only $4,000 a year. He's kept dropping the rent down during this time that they have a crisis. And Celine Area Social Services is still seeking an even more cheap, an even cheaper alternative with St. Joseph Mercy facilities. I have also spoken to Catholic Social Services about assisting as a facilitator, and I talked to Pam Smith at United Way, and she will include that as an option. United Way is moving forward with a consultant to help all parties continue to try to figure out the best way to serve the Celine Area School District needing. So from my initial impression, when I saw the news releases about Celine Area Social Services losing $75,000 and being in very dire straits, I do see that United Way is being helpful, and they're being collaborative, and it's the United Way that's been helping the community all along, so I'm backing off from being upset that first day. I think I only had part of the picture that first time, and now that I circle around and I see all of it, United Way very much is supporting this process. So that finishes my announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. And, you know, I do appreciate that you have been in touch with Pam Smith, the Executive Director of United Way. I have been as well, and I think they are trying their best to be of assistance to Celine Social Services. And I completely and 100% echo your comments that Celine's, or Social Services is a very important valuable organization in this community, and they still need our help. So those who are able to financially support that organization, I think everyone here on council would strongly encourage you to do so.
One thing people may not know, Celine Area Social Services has been serving the school district for 51 years, and they've been in the location that they're in now for more than 30 years. I mean, they could move location if they can save $4,000 rent, but their rent has been dropped and dropped and dropped by Bill Kinley. Bill Kinley is being a really good landlord and helpful to the community in this.
And I appreciate you giving us advance notice about your absence at our September meeting, and I'm very sorry to hear about your mom, and you and your family will definitely be in our thoughts and in our prayers. Mr. Rhodes?
With respect to Mr. Burgoyne's wish for expansion on the west end, I did notice that there's a Realtor who's been advertising a 91-acre property adjacent to the city limits, and he's marketing it as suitable for development. Apparently, it's off Waterworks Road, backs up to, I don't know, Northview or something?
It would about Northview. Yep.
Yeah.
Are there other reports or announcements? Do you want to kick off our, our visit, was it last month now?
It was on July 17.
Yeah, okay.
The City of Celine visited City of Whitehall for a mayor exchange day, and they presented us with this very nice proclamation, or they presented it to the mayor. We also received, as part of their businesses, they make up these nice crocs, which they made us for Celine, and this is our coordinates, which we will be hanging in our, our entryway. So you'll be able to see this when you come in. But it was a very interesting day, and it was a lot of fun. They were great hosts.
Now, if I'm not mistaken, this is, this was actually manufactured in Whitehall. Is that correct?
Yes, these were both manufactured there.
At a company called Whitehall Products.
So we've talked about getting a mom or some sort of plant in this, and maybe putting it on the front counter. It's very attractive, is a very nice gift and a token of our, of our new friendship.
Right.
Yeah, very good. Okay, if there are no additional reports and announcements, do we want to move on to Town Hall Facilitator? Terry, do you want to start this one off, or Clerk Royall, rather?
Well, I spoke with Lou Bender. I handed out a memo regarding his availability and what he would be doing for us, and then he also sent me information on the, on the cost, which I put out for you, and some follow-up information. And he's just excited to be speaking with us, and he spoke with Todd, and I think Todd would be able to tell you anything that you might need to know.
Mr. K?
As Clerk Royall alluded, the conference call we had with Dr. Bender is, I mean, he's a longtime facilitator, teacher, professor, a number, he's, for decades has provided a lot of training around the state for municipal employees at a lot of levels. He's, he's provided, I know a number of our, a number of our staff here, including myself, have attended at least one, if not multiple, training sessions put on by Dr. Bender, does a great job. As I mentioned last week, when I did talk with Brian Murphy, Village Manager, and again, the village excites me, in Illinois, Brian was a, was a longtime city manager in Michigan before moving to Illinois a few years ago. But in any case, they're going, they're utilizing Dr. Bender right now for a similar strategic planning process, and he was very, very excited about it, very supportive of the methodology utilized, and is continuing to look forward as, as they move forward with a longer-term relationship. But, but no, certainly if this is the direction that council would like to go, I think Dr. Bender would do a very, very, very good job. And again, the question of looking at a one-year or five-year plan, you know, so I, but again, I think the process is very solid. It's very, it's similar to what you all participate in, looking at an, on an annual basis as well, at your strategic plan. So, but this, again, the big part of this, the big change, obviously, So, but this, again, the big part of this, the big change obviously would be to have a Town Hall-type setting and invite the public in to comment.
I should follow up too. I still have not been able to connect with the Mayor Fenton, who also used Lou Bender in the past as a facilitator and a strategic planner. I did send her an email today. I hope to hear back from her shortly. But based on the research that I have done, and, you know, Todd has expressed this, as has Terry, he has a sterling reputation. And so my hunch is that I'm going to hear very positive glowing reviews on his performance and abilities. So again, I would open this up if people have, have developed a consensus and would like to offer a suggestion that the Chair would very much welcome that. Mr. Girbert?
Just a question, how does this correlate with what Kelly Petrock's done for us?
As I mentioned, very similar. You may recall that last year's strategic planning session, council brought up the idea of doing a Town Hall-type setting. And, you know, Kelly, Mr. Petrock said that, you know, he'd be happy to do it, but he, you know, he's more, he's more familiar with doing in the smaller groups, and that he had, he would have, he would have no problem if you all wanted to utilize somebody that had more experience facilitating a much larger group such as the Town Hall type.
So we would forego Kelly this year?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Mr. Rhodes, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I would be in favor of continuing to work with Dr. Bender to arrange for him to hold these Town Hall meetings and other meetings within our community.
Mr. Hart, Mayor Protem?
Yes, yeah, I'm in favor of continuing this, down this, this route as well. I like the, the idea of developing a five-year vision and including members of the community. Both of those are attractive to me.
Great. Mr. Girbert?
Will one meeting be sufficient for a Town Hall, for meeting with the citizens and everything?
Well, certainly, as, as Dr. Bender said in his email, I mean, this, this can be changed or amended, but this is what, this is a similar process that he's utilized. So if you all wanted to have multiple meetings, certainly could. Again, it's going to depend, obviously, the turnout, you know, how this, for instance, the, back in '05, I think I've mentioned this before, back in '05, my understanding during, during the Cool Cities, the, can't think of the program, the blueprints, here we go, the blueprints program where the Town Hall meeting, my understanding was there was approximately 300 people in attendance that provided comment and input to the process. So that, you know, again, I don't know that we'll get 300 people, maybe we will, maybe we won't. But certainly, you know, hopefully, a significant number, and I'm not sure what that number would be, but hopefully, we could attract a significant number of folks and get their input. We could obviously determine a larger venue for that meeting. And again, typically, as he suggested, typically, if you offer some sort of nourishment, people tend to have, you better have a better result.
No, I was just curious, because I know we've done some things with Kelly where we didn't have really a great turnout. And I think whatever we do with this, we've got to make sure that it's a significant turnout for it. So, no, I'm in favor of going forward with this as long as we're substituting this without using Kelly again, so.
Mr. Roth?
I'm in favor.
Okay. Mr. Burgoyne?
Well, I have an issue with so-called Town Meetings in places that you don't have Town Meetings. In the past, I have been at Town Meetings where there have been 800 or 1,200 people and so forth, because they really were Town Meetings. I would rather take the pulse of the community and listen to the silent majority rather than just the squeaky wheel that comes to every meeting. So I don't favor excluding most of the community. It's self-selection as to who comes forward and speaks because they have some particular axe to grind or whatever. They bring themselves forward that way. I'd rather sample outward towards the community. And if we have something that's called, something the City Council does, we can do it as a City Council, but I'd rather sample out towards the community, to the people who are not represented.
Very good. So we'll continue to pursue this. Mr. Girbert, do you have a?
I was just going to say, perhaps we could do potential live broadcasts where we could have individuals participate that way, too.
That'd be great. All right. We'll come back with additional information at the next meeting. Mr. Fordice and Mr. Campbell, I believe you're reporting back on downtown parking enforcement and signage from a discussion we had about a month ago. And Chief Rennick, excuse me.
Mayor Protem. It's all you gentlemen.
Mr. Campbell, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Yeah, this was a follow-up, as you may recall. We, the Chief and Mr. Fordice and myself, did a walkabout here maybe a month or better ago, after a recent work session on downtown parking and, and folks' feelings on whether there is or isn't appropriate signage to direct people to public parking spaces and such. And so we did that walkabout, we presented that, and then this is a follow-up to some of those questions that Mr. Fordice is providing. And then also, in addition to that, Chief and I conducted a public meeting of the, where we invited all the downtown business and property owners to attend here a few, couple weeks ago, and received their comments, reference enforcement of parking. And currently, as you all are aware, there are currently parking restrictions in the parking lots downtown, as well as on-street parking in the downtown area. So we took their comments, and the Chief provided a bulleted summary of those, those comments. And so I will, unless there's any questions, comments of me, I will turn over to Mr. Fordice and Chief Rennick.
Any questions? Mr. Fordice?
Thank you. Just following up on two factual, questions of fact from the last presentation. One was regarding what signs we could use in the right-of-way as directional signs towards our, our public parking lots. And the MUTCD, the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, we are required to comply with that. So the, the signs that are defined within that document are what we can use within the right-of-way. However, as we do now, in the parking lots themselves, we can use whatever stylized sign we want to use. So if, if we want to remove the current, what we're calling decorative signs, and replace those with something else, we were discussing replacing them with something simpler. I had proposed something that was similar to the, the street signs, but that certainly, that could be any design that, that we choose, and we can put any, any message or decoration on there that we want. And there was another question about sign height. And generally speaking, the standard for the signs in the downtown area would be seven feet from grade to the bottom of the sign. There are a couple of spots in the downtown area where I think you could make an argument to place them at five feet instead of seven. And there are, in fact, a couple of signs along Michigan Avenue where there's no parking on the side of the street, and the sidewalk is fairly far removed from the curb, that signs are currently placed at five feet.
Any questions for Mr. Fordice? No? Okay. Chief?
Well, I, I hope everybody has my memo that I wrote, I think it was last week, and the comments were varied. I don't have it.
No. No, we don't, we did not have a memo from you. It wasn't in my package.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No?
Okay. Well, I don't have it with me either.
Can you, can you send it out electronically?
Yes, I can.
Maybe put a copy in our mailbox as well?
Sure. And then I'll, I'll just talk from memory. I do know that we had probably 20 to 25 people here for that meeting, and we had some varied conversation, but the, the actual vote, when we took a vote, the people who actually wanted to say yes or no, or how long they wanted enforcement done, there was one person who said they absolutely do not want enforcement in any of the parking lots. And then there were three people who said they, they would like the three-hour, and then there were three people who said they would like four-hour enforcement. Like I said, we had about 25 people here, so that doesn't represent all of them. But the other ones were really non-committal, and, you know, they just kind of shook their heads a lot, and, but they also had some very good comments as well. From enforcing one lot at a different time period than other lots, you know, just sporadic enforcement, increasing some parking on the streets, shortening some spaces, lengthening some spaces to make more parking on the street. Couple people commented, or excuse me, one person commented that they hadn't heard a comment in over 10 years about parking issues downtown, and thought that there wasn't really an issue, and that they didn't see any problem with the parking. And then I think just recently, the, all the council members did just receive a letter, an email from Paul, from Brecken Grille, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and I, hopefully, you've had a chance to read that. So you, you have his comments as well. So it's, it's basically wide open. Todd, do you have anything that you'd like to add to that?
I believe a couple comments, suggestions to, one would be, because one of the concerns is that, is in my terms, I call hobscotching, where people play in the game, where if they know that we're going to be out marking the tires, chalking the tires, that they're going to go out before that current three-hour, or whatever, four-hour, whatever it would be, time period would expire, and they would move their vehicle. So one suggestion would be to say, well, if, that they can't, because sometimes people just move it back and forth so that the chalk mark is moved or gone. Some just drive around the block and come back and park. So one of the suggestions was, well, don't allow them to park back in that same lot. Another was if, if, if they were issued a ticket and somebody came, so if they issued a ticket the first, say, four hours of the day, and they came back four hours later, because currently it's eight to six.
That's correct.
That, that if they hadn't moved their car and they still had a ticket, that they could, you could issue them a subsequent ticket. To, again, to send the message that, hey, you shouldn't be parking here, you're still in violation. So those were, those were a couple of items. And I think added that comment about the one vendor, or the one business owner stated about hadn't heard complaints in several years, that they had actually been, they started to receive, they'd received a couple recently in the last six months, that there were some parking concerns in parking lot one, which would be in the north, the northeast quadrant.
Mr. Burgoyne?
Did, was there consideration of not having parking limits on the south side of Michigan Avenue, but having parking limits in the northeast quadrant behind the Presbyterian Church in that area? Because that seems to be the one where Bill Kinley was talking about, that seems to be the one that has the most pressure on not being able to find a good parking spot. So was there any thought to, you know, doing away with the signage, actually taking the sign down, you might leave the post, but just taking the sign down in, in some areas and only enforcing in some other areas? Because I would be in favor of enforcing if you have the sign. I mean, if you make a rule, I think you should follow the rule.
Yeah, I would take over. I believe Chief did mention that, that that was one of the suggestions, that enforcing only in a certain lot or certain lots, but specifically to that, to that point, Mr. Burgoyne, that was one of the suggestions of enforcing in parking lot one, which is in the northeast quadrant.
But removing the signs elsewhere?
Certainly, right. I mean, if you, again, that was another point that, yeah, you certainly couldn't enforce anything without the proper signage. So, like I said, it could be a way to do it, but.
And I think there was also some discussion about how that may or may not be fair to those businesses on the south side of Michigan as opposed to the north, why the ones in the south would have unlimited parking and the ones in the north would be penalized for parking for over three hours.
Right.
That topic came in as well.
Yeah, I guess I would be interested, you know, to Mr. Burgoyne's point of evaluate that, evaluating that a little bit more. And although it is anecdotal, the email that you referenced from Paul Gregosi, and the owner of Brecken Grille, his point was well-taken, that primarily, not exclusively, but primarily, in my opinion, the parking issues are really in the lot behind Dan's and the downtown diner. Are there occasional parking issues in the other quadrants? Certainly. But for the most part, predominantly, I think the issues are in the lot, and that, would that be the northeast corner?
Right.
Quadrant of downtown. So I would be interested in perhaps evaluating that a little bit further. To the earlier point, too, and I was unaware that, that this was verbalized at the little meeting that you had here a couple of weeks ago, I think it's very interesting and certainly worth pursuing further if there's the opportunity and feasibility of adding additional street parking. I don't think anybody would be against that. Again, I don't know how feasible that is, but I think that's probably worth taking another look at as well. Additional comments? And of course, we'll look forward to seeing an email from you with this.
And I apologize that you did not receive.
No, it's all right. With a scanned memorandum, and then also if you could put a hard copy in our mailbox, that'd be appreciated. Mr. Hart?
Yeah, just have a question. So when you say expanding street parking, what does that mean? What would that look like?
Well, one of the suggestions was is that there's apparently some spots on McKay that are like one and a half times as long as they need to be, and if they were properly marked, you could get two or three more spaces in there.
On the east side of Ann Arbor Street.
Adjacent to Quantum Signal?
On the east side of Ann Arbor Street.
No, they, they said west.
Yeah, it was actually.
There are no spaces marked on the west side of Ann Arbor Street, on McKay.
Yeah, right. I think, I think they talked, well, I think they talked about reducing the size on East McKay and then adding.
And then marking, so it would be marking spaces.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And I, we also talked about, if you may recall, when Mr. Fordice did his PowerPoint presentation, that was one of the recommendations to look at, was to add maybe some evening time parking along East McKay on the south side of the road, after the T and M and such are closed. And also, we talked about adding a few spaces along East Henry Street.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think one, one of the other suggestions that came up was also is that Saturday parking would not be enforced.
By Saturday?
Free parking on Saturdays.
Saturdays, and then obviously, when you have festivals, would not enforce those, those hours.
Let me grab Mr. Girbert, and then we'll come back to you, Mr. Burgoyne.
Just to tag on with Mr. Campbell, was mentioning about marking streets, or spots in the streets, I'd also do just on South Harris between Henry and Michigan Avenue, there's been, I know we're talking about downtown, but that's also part of the downtown. There's been the concern there of how cars are parking all the time. And I've had one of the, well, one of the barbers in make comments about how cars park down there and the way that, you know, depending on what size is there and how they park, doesn't fulfill it. And even Speedway has their people parked there. So I think that should be also included in any kind of street markings that we do. But also, I think I agree with some of the individuals whose concerns are that parking lot number one seems to be the concern, and if the majority of the problems seem to be continuing with employees and owners, then enforcement may need to happen. I don't think it's the customers as much as it is actually the individuals that are potentially hindering their, their own operations. So I think that kind of enforcement there would work. And potentially expanding the number of hours at which you can park in the other lots until that becomes, if that becomes a concern, we can always pull back on it, too. But it's anywhere uptown, we've got 15-minute parking we enforce in certain areas, we've got half-hour parking loans, we've got all kinds of discrepancies all over. And I think if it's signage right, like we've been talking, that's the way to approach it uptown. We've got to make, that's how it works in an airport, that's how it works in major downtowns, where there's a concern, where there's always a problem, you have to adjust for that, to adjust for whatever's happening.
Let me grab Mr. Burgoyne, Mr. Campbell, since he had his hand up, then we'll come back to you.
The other issue that I didn't hear any feedback on, maybe you did not discuss it, is I have heard from some of the shops downtown that when the Stone Arch has major events, it uses up the parking. And when the parking is used up, it makes an impact on the businesses nearby, especially in the southeast parking area. So I'm, I'm just wondering how to think that issue through also. It's not possibly, if you had three- or four-hour parking, that event might not exceed that. So I, I don't know what the solution is, but I have heard that that is a parking issue. So I, I don't know what the solution is, but I have heard that that is a parking issue.
Mr. Campbell?
Thank you. That did not come up, as I recall, I don't believe that that, that came up for point of discussion. I would say that, again, because I, we didn't look into it, but I, one question I would have is the timing, because a lot of those are, are wedding receptions, for instance, a lot of those are gonna be after, after the hour's already expired, the, the current eight to six. But then another item that I, that just popped in my head that was also discussed was from a private property owner, Quantum Signal, that has their own parking lot, and they certainly are in favor of enforcement, because they get a lot of folks parking in their lot when they shouldn't be. And even when they ask them to leave, identify themselves as the, you know, that they're on private property, they shouldn't, I mean, apparently, allegedly, people are getting belligerent, and even threatening physical violence, and it's, so, but, but his, but Mitch Road, the owner of Quantum Signal, his point was that if you're, if you're gonna have rules and regulations, but you don't enforce them, that then, right, that fosters an action of, or lack of respect, not following the rules, meaning that exacerbated by not following the rules, by essentially trespassing on private property. He even made mention that they're strongly, and I, again, this is just a comment that he made, but they're strongly considering putting up a fence and gates at their property, so.
So it looks like we've got a little bit more research and digging to do. We'll add this as a discussion item at our next meeting as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Last, but certainly not least, is the COLA issue that got brought up at last Monday's work session. I, I just want to clarify, for the retirees who, who contacted city council, who, who attended that meeting, the agenda was to discuss the financing of our pension liability, not necessarily to discuss or consider a cost of living increase for pensioners. That is certainly not something that, that's certainly something, excuse me, that I would be willing to discuss at an appropriate time, but I think the appropriate time to consider a cost of living adjustment would be during our annual budgeting process, and not late in the summer, early fall, as we're discussing our pension liability. So I don't know where, where everyone else stands on that. I was a little surprised, and quite frankly, taken aback by, by some of the comments, because that was not really an agenda item. Again, I'm happy to discuss cost of living adjustments for pensioners, but I think it should be in conjunction with our budgeting process, where we understand the extent to our, of our financial liabilities. So, does that make sense, Mr. Rhodes?
Yeah, I, I agree with that approach.
Okay. Mr. Gearbaugh?
Yep.
Mr. Roth?
Agree with it.
Okay, Mr. Hart?
Yes, I agree, and I would also say, it's just, it's unfortunate that there was misinformation out there that meant some folks actually came and sat through a meeting that was probably not the most stimulating use of their time for that, for that evening.
That's putting it mildly, an important subject, but certainly not stimulating. Okay. Looks like we have consensus on that, so we'll make, we'll make sure that staff takes note of that, and that will be considered during our, our budgeting process in, in 2015, for our 2015, 2016 budget. If there's nothing further to be discussed tonight under the discussion portion of our agenda, we'll move on to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comments or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. However, anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess, and Mr. Burgoyne's comments on coming up, and I guess greasing the wheel was interesting. I've done it for over five decades, so I guess with the grace of God, I'll be here at, after him, too. There are a couple comments that I have concerns about over the last three years, and when we're talking about walkability, it's the mailbox that is on the sidewalk next to Brecken Grill. I have brought it to numerous attentions. Twice a week, there's a mail truck that parks in the street to go and empty the mailbox. I've asked if it's possible to contact the postmaster and have it put in another area. It does not service, but it does impede pedestrian walkway. The other thing is our American flag and honoring it. Couple years ago, I brought pictures of our American flag in the cemetery, in snow, in rags, in tatters, and also its colors faded. I have asked that it be, when we put them out, that we take them out of our cemetery in a timely manner. They are, again, tattered and on the ground. As someone on council said a couple years ago, them that put them in should take them out. And if that is, in fact, the comment that should rule, I would ask that the council not allow them to be put into the cemetery until they have a plan to take them out. I have, and the mayor has contacted the city manager, we have a Boy Scout leader who has offered, after my request, to possibly go in and pull them out. I've always been conscientious of our flag, and it's important that we honor it. And someday, go through the cemetery, it's a shame, and I'm ashamed that we allow it to be as bad as they are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there additional public comments? There are no additional public comments. Well, to, to, to Mrs. Hess's statement, we will certainly reach out to the post office. Obviously, the, the placement of, of a mailbox is, is contingent upon our, our, our local post office, but we can certainly verbalize and express some of those concerns. And as you know, as it relates to the American flags that are placed on veterans' graves in advance of Memorial Day, we are working with a Boy Scout troop to see if the flags can be picked up and disposed of appropriately, when it's, when it's appropriate to do so. But I think I speak for everyone here on council, that we, we greatly value the importance of the American flag. It's a symbol of our freedoms and our liberties, and a sign of, of who we are, and who we are as the, the greatest nation on earth. So your, your points are, are very well taken. If there is no other business to be brought before Celine City Council this evening, our next meetings are on Oc-, or October, September. Well, we do have meetings in October as well. September 8th and September 15th, both beginning at 7:30 PM. We've already excused the absence of Councilwoman Sybil, or Terry Sybil-Koenig, so at this time, I would seek a motion to adjourn at 9:16 PM.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tahr. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Ayes have it. This meeting's adjourned.